I would like to call the December 6, 2016 Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck. Sanchez.
Okay, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has passed, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
For those of you who would like to speak about anything other than oil and gas, you would be able to do so during the public invited to be heard. For those of you here to talk about oil and gas, we would ask that you hold your comments until after the presentation. We will take public comments on oil and gas at that time. So we're actually going to change the order here. So we're going to move forward with the special reports and presentation.
I believe Commander Moore is here to make this presentation.
All right.
Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for having us tonight. Commander David Moore, Longmont Police Department. I'm here with Officer Goodard, Robert, and we're here for a very special presentation. In August of this year, he was on routine patrol, driving around town, saw an area of congestion with traffic, and upon further investigation, people came over and started waving him down and said there was a lady in a vehicle that was trying to commit suicide. So he approached the vehicle, noticed a tremendous amount of blood in the car, a knife on the seat, and began to engage a female conversation, to which she basically could only reply, "Help," and then she went unconscious. So due to Officer Goodard's knowledge, his calm under duress, his medical insight, he was able to apply a tourniquet to the arm that was bleeding the most. She was cut in multiple places and was able to stop the bleeding and also get medical aid to her very quickly. Called on the radio while he was applying the tourniquet to get fire started to help her out, so ultimately saved the lady's life. So tonight, we're here to present Officer Goodard with a lifesaving medal for his work that fateful day in August. Thank you.
list is James Kenworthy. So you have three minutes to speak and state your name and address before you begin speaking, please.
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. I am going to read from an article by Dan Leftwich, a local attorney. The name of this article is seizing the initiative against preemption, the rediscovery of fundamental rights. This article will describe the constitutional rights of the registered electors of Longmont, Fort Collins, Broomfield, and other communities in Colorado to enact initiatives under Article 5, Section 1 of the Colorado Constitution, independent from the General Assembly, to restrict fracking in their communities. The municipal governments where these initiatives are enacted are inherently and factually inadequate representatives of the registered electors. The rights in Article 5 belong to the registered electors of these municipalities, not the municipal governments. These fundamental rights cannot be preempted by the state or COGA acting as its proxy because the people's rights to legislate to protect their communities from this dangerous industrial activity are superior to the rights of the legislature, the executive branch, and the municipal governments in which these initiatives were enacted. Under Article 5, Section 1, the registered electors have the explicit right to prohibit what the state authorizes, even where the state claims some interest is impacted. Any attempt by the state directly or through COGA to preempt these local initiatives is a violation of Article 5, Section 1, and the separation of powers, the separation of powers principle set out in Article 3 of the Colorado Constitution. Part 5 of this article will describe how COGA's use of state preemption, apparently with unfettered discretion to target initiatives based on their content and the way people vote, imposes a chilling effect on core political speech, freedom of association, and the right to equal participation in the political process. Article 5 was amended in 1910 because the people were concerned about the corrupting influence of special interests in state government. They found it necessary to reserve the power to pass legislation of every character in and for their respective municipalities without interference from the General Assembly and the executive branch. The people created the General Assembly and allow it to legislate on their behalf as long as it acts in a way that suits their needs. If state legislation does not protect the public health, safety, and environment against the hazards of fracking or any other dangerous processes...
Jim, you're three minutes for now.
Thank you.
Strider Binstan.
I don't have North Dakota clothes, but I got Longmont clothes, so I made it, and I got four wheels this time. I will only say one thing about the oil. I don't think we need to be digging streets to our only natural lake. As you may well know, the lake out there came from a buffalo. I forget what you call it, wallow, a buffalo wallow. But anyway, we have a, I will have to say tragic election that we're dealing with, and I hope we can save our country and our democracy. And I've got one thing to say about it. Advertising signs say, "Con you into thinking you're the one that can do what's never been done, that can win what's never been won. Meantime, life outside goes on all around you. And though the masters make the rules, for the wise men and the fools, I got nothing, ma, to live up to. Some mourn victories, some downfall, private reasons, great or small, can be seen in the eyes of them that call for all that should be killed or crawl. Meanwhile, others say don't hate nothing at all except hatred. And though the rules of the road have been lost, it's only people's games that we got to dodge. But it's all right, ma, I can make it."
You. So now we'll move on to our study session item.
Mayor Coombs, that is the oil and gas update presentation, and Eugene May will lead this presentation off.
She brought out all the big dogs tonight, didn't she? Dan, are you going to stay here to stay awake tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Eugene May. I'm the Longmont City Attorney, and I am privileged to kick off this presentation tonight on oil and gas update. As you can see, I'm joined by venerable city staff, and they'll help me with the presentation as we go through it. So we really structured this presentation to be responsive to the questions we've heard from the council and the community. Basically, three areas. There was a question about whether we can impose a moratorium and update the city regulations. In our background section, I'll be recounting the history of the regulations and their current status. We also heard questions about the status of the law following the Supreme Court's decision in Longmont's fracking lawsuit. So Assistant City Attorney Dan Kramer is going to take us through the two lawsuits and his understanding of the current status of the law following that lawsuit. Our third section will be about environmental stewardship efforts the city has made in the areas of oil and gas, and those will be presented by our Public Works Natural Resources Department and our City Manager's Office. And finally, from the community, we've heard interest in understanding, to the extent possible, what council was talking about in the executive sessions as it relates to the top operating master contract and operators agreement. Our General Manager of Public Works, Dale Rademaker, will be presenting next steps under the top operating master contract and operators agreement. And in terms of the format that we're coming before you tonight, obviously, it's a study session. We heard conversation at council trying to determine what the most appropriate forum was. Staff received direction from council to start with the study session, present the background information, make sure everybody's got a level playing field in terms of information. And then council also considered the possibility of some type of public forum in the future, and following tonight's study session, we'll seek council direction on how they'd like to proceed for that. Couple words about format, a couple more words. One, we do have public comment after the staff presentation. This is a break from usual city process, but we felt like, given the amount of public interest in this item, that it would make sense for the public to have an opportunity to comment after they hear staff's presentation, should they have questions about that. And finally, we do have four main sections of the presentation. From start to finish, would probably take about an hour. We're going to have a pause after each section to see if council has any questions for that staff member before we move on. And so with that, I'll start with the background. And it just struck me today, it was almost five years ago to the date, that this article came out reporting on contamination near the Trail Ridge Middle School at the Ryder Well. Benzine levels 100 times the state limit. This article, in my opinion, really galvanized the community, become interested in the oil and gas issue, brought this issue to council. A few months earlier, the city council had met with the Weld County Commissioners, had listened to some of the benefits and risks concerned with oil and gas development, and were already moving towards looking at updating our regulations, which dated from the early So to start the new year, the ball really got rolling. Council passed a 100-day moratorium in January 2012. The purpose of that was to give us time to look at updates to our oil and gas regulations on a very aggressive time schedule. It was originally thought that we would pass regulations by the end of April. And then our venerable Mayor Pro Tem was appointed to the first statewide oil and gas task force by then-President of the Senate, Brandon Schaefer. Longmont was really at the forefront of municipalities in the front range, looking at updating their oil and gas regulations, and consequently really garnered the attention of the state and the industry. Through the regulation development process, we had a number of public sessions, some of which were attended by the State Attorney General's Office, as well as the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. They submitted written comments on our regulations, mostly telling us that our regulations were preempted, and if we were to move forward with them, they would sue us to have those In terms of Longmont history for oil and gas, this date of July 17, 2012, was really one of the watersheds. It was at that time that the Longmont City Council approved our oil and gas regulations, and at the same time and at the same meeting, council approved an operators agreement with our local operator, top operating, through a master contract and operating agreement. And I'll go into further detail on both regulations and those two contracts in a minute. Looking at our regulations, it was really structured as a two-track local permitting process. We thought that there were some areas of regulation that were questionable, whether we had the authority or were preempted by the state. We, as a general matter, made those recommended standards. If you were to meet recommended standards, then you would be eligible for administrative review. We also had a set of mandatory standards, and if you only met the mandatory standards, then you had a public hearing review. This slide summarizes the key aspects of our ordinance from a substantive operational standard perspective. Of greatest import, we think, under the mandatory standards is a residential zoning restriction. This really embodied, one of council's top priorities was to keep drilling out of our neighborhoods and protect our community through that residential zoning restriction. We're also concerned with groundwater monitoring being triggered by some of the findings at near Trail Ridge Middle School. And then we thought one of the greatest protections you could have was distance, and so one of our voluntary standards was a 750-foot step back. This was at a time when the state setback was 150 feet, and so Longmont moved five times that standard. And at the time, it was really, I think, a pretty bold move to have a standard that great. And as you can see, we had other protections under our voluntary standards, including closed-loop and pitless systems and setting back from our important water bodies within the city. the city. Our ordinance also contained a number of other provisions that we would not get the benefit of under the current state regulations. Some of these were more legal technical requirements, like indemnification insurance to protect the city and create a insurance fund in case there were to be cleanup needed. We also thought it was very important to have a right of entry to these well sites. That is something that we would not have been permitted authority to do under the state regulations. We imposed impact fees for impacts to our transportation systems from the anticipated truck traffic and the wear and tear on the roads. And we created an operational conflict off-ramp. This was really recognizing some of the operational conflict preemption law currently existing under state court decisions. And Dan Kramer will address that in more detail when he gets to the lawsuits. The operational conflict off-ramp was our attempt to recognize the state operational conflict standard, and if an operator were to propose something that was an irreconcilable conflict, we thought it was wise to create a sort of variance procedure in order to accommodate that type of use without running afoul of state law. The other major component of that July 2012 meeting was the master contract. It really established a comprehensive vision for oil and gas development on the eastern border of Longmont. And it was a complex business deal with top operating involving property purchases, consolidated drilling site location, lease provisions, and other considerations, which we'll take a look at. So one of the real policy goals of the master contract was based upon this map. And the yellow dots are the potential drilling locations allowed under COGCC spacing requirements. And instead of having multiple wells being drilled all over the place, we thought it was in Longmont's best interest to have those wells consolidated in order to protect sensitive habitat, view sheds, and reduce the footprint of oil and gas development. Another policy goal expressed in the master contract was to keep oil and gas development away from residences. And so you'll see these red circles as a 750-foot setback from occupied structures. And then another key component of the top master contract was the city's purchase of the Ryder property. Here, as you can see, there's residential development nearby. We wanted to take the possibility of oil and gas wells impinging upon that residential development, and therefore purchased the Ryder property. So we go, well, so there's a region up north next to Union Reservoir, and between that is 119, and south of that is Sandstone Ranch and the Riparian areas. Taking a look at the northern section around Union Reservoir, instead of all those wells here located in pink are the consolidated well sites agreed to in the top master contract. Another key feature is the closure of the Ryder Well, which was right here. If you remember back at that First Times Call article, this was the well located next to the Trail Ridge Middle School. We thought it was protective of the city's interests, and certainly the school district's interests, to close that well in such close proximity to the school. The top master contract also provided that the city would acquire the Lindbergh property, which was in a key strategic location for the expansion of Union Reservoir. As you can see, it's really on the border and plays an important part for that potential future facility. Also, TOP agreed to support Longmont's applications to the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission for designated outside activity areas. These are areas that have important recreational or other values for which there would be no surface development. And the city of Longmont actually has some of the only designated outside activity areas in the state. One was right here, which was the Union Reservoir Recreation Area, and so there would be no surface disturbance in that location. And then recall, south of 119, the potential for oil and gas development based on COGCC well spacing looks like this. What is agreed to in the top master contract are the three consolidated wells shown here The city also applied for outside activity area designation for Sandstone Ranch. Obviously, Sandstone Ranch is one of the jewels of Longmont's recreation and park system, and that would cover this location here. As consideration for TOP's agreements on all these items, the city agreed to lease them, grant them new mineral leases on the northern shore properties up here, these three properties, the Lower Adrian property here, and then here, and then Couster here. The city also agreed to set up a royalty account, which would be funded through oil and gas royalties that would pay for a Ryder replacement well, for TOP agreeing to close this well and replace it with this well, and also the incremental costs in moving to these consolidated sites from what they could have had. The companion document to the master contract was the operators agreement. The state was pushing these contractual agreements between local governments and oil and gas operators as an alternative to regulation. In terms of Longmont's strategy, the operators agreement provided redundancy for a lot of the regulations that council was considering at the time by incorporating these into the contract, making them enforceable as a contractual obligation in case the regs were overturned in a lawsuit. So there were some key provisions I'd like to highlight for council and the public in the operators agreement. As we showed you, the consolidated well sites were established as the exclusive drilling locations within those properties. The rest of those properties were covered by a non-disturbance agreement, which means that TOP could not establish a drilling location anywhere except within those pink consolidated well sites. TOP also agreed that the standards in the operators agreement would apply to any operation of theirs within the city. It also provides for pipelines and pipeline easements outside the individual properties. The thought there was that pipeline transport of oil, gas, and water was a much safer, less impactful way to deliver product to and from the site. It also established the size of the drill sites as a three-acre default, potentially expandable to eight acres upon a showing of need, and then limiting it to 10 acres on a temporary basis. And also, very importantly, it created a five-year drill window where TOP actually had to develop these consolidated well sites within that five-year timeline, or else lose their ability to do so. And that five-year timeline is ticking now. It was stayed during the litigation, but now they're under the clock, and so I think there is some urgency on their part to develop their rights under the master contract and their existing leases. A lot of the provisions on this slide are really duplicative of the regs, but just wanted to demonstrate that they are contained in the contract as well as the regulations. And then the other key component of Longmont's history is Article 16, which we all know banned fracking and was considered by the Supreme Court late last year, and they issued a decision in May of this year. That initiative prohibited fracking and the disposable fracking waste here in Longmont. And I remember the day when council announced at a public session that they would vigorously defend our charter against lawsuits by the state, by the Colorado Oil and Gas Association, and later joined by the state. So that really kind of lays the background for, I think, oil and gas development 1.0. We're going to hear about 2.0 later, but I just want to check with council if they've had any questions about that before we move on.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You mentioned the transport lines. Are we going to have an inspector for those transport lines, or is that something that staff is considering?
I think it's too preliminary right now to really say what we would do. It's certainly something we would be considering.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
So the regulations actually apply to anyone, not just TOP, anyone who's drilling.
That's correct. It would be a land use development application.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for questions.
If there's no further questions, I will turn it over to Assistant City Attorney Dan Kramer.
Mayor and council, Assistant City Attorney Dan Kramer, here to talk about the lawsuits that we faced on oil and gas and where they leave us today. So there were two lawsuits. The first one was based on our regulations filed initially by the state agency, COGCC, joined thereafter by the Oil and Gas Association. The second lawsuit was filed by the association against the citizen-initiated Charter Amendment, and then later joined by the state. So they joined each other's lawsuits. Also, in both cases, were citizen groups intervening to defend the city. I want to start with the fracking lawsuit. We made a couple of large-scale arguments in that case. The first one was based on our home rule authority as a home rule city. And we argued that the city faced a lot of impacts from fracking, that if fracking were to occur, it would damage our air quality, and the potential would be for asthma, cancer, birth defects. We supported this with public studies. Not that we did, but that were in the public domain. Water pollution and spills from production associated with fracking. The truck traffic associated with fracking is very high, and there are studies describing the increase in traffic fatalities as a result of that. Also, just fires and explosions that can occur at high-volume well sites. Property values can decline, said these studies, and we even had a socioeconomic study showing a decrease in quality of life in communities that are faced with large-scale fracking. And the question we were asking the court was, there's a case from 1990, Denver versus the state, which held that when the local government has strong interests in the matter, and it's a home rule city, and the state also has interests in the matter, then you weigh the state's interests versus the local interests to see which ones are weightier. And if local interests are weightier, then it's a matter of local concern, and the local law actually trumps the state law. So that was the argument we were making on home rule. Beyond home rule, we made an argument on preemption. So this applies not just to home rule cities, but to statutory counties and statutory municipalities. There are three types of preemption. Preemption just means that the state law nullifies or voids the local law. The first way that can happen is express preemption when the state law comes right out and says, no local government may make any law like this. The second type is implied preemption. That's where the state law doesn't quite say that, but the regulations it creates are so comprehensive that they leave no room for the local government to maneuver. Impliedly, the local government cannot make any law on that subject. The Colorado Supreme Court had already ruled in 1992 that express and implied preemption do not apply to the State Oil and Gas Conservation Act. So we were really talking about the third type of preemption, which is conflict preemption. And that is the type of preemption that happens when, even though the first two types of preemption don't apply, what the local law does is a material impediment to the state's achievement of its interests behind the state law, operational conflict preemption. And we were really looking at these two cases from 1992. The first one was Voss, which said that Greeley could not completely ban all oil and gas operations within its jurisdiction. The second one was Bowen Edwards, which said that La Plata County could regulate oil and gas so long as what it did did not materially impede the state's interests behind the state law. And so what we were trying to say was, first of all, this is not a ban on all oil and gas operations, like what Greeley did. This is a ban on fracking. There are other ways that the state and, well, that operators can produce minerals so as to achieve the state interest. And we also said, look at the language in Bowen Edwards, that says that in order to prove that the local law materially impedes the state interest, the entity challenging the local law has to actually produce evidence. There has to be a fully developed evidentiary record to support that conflict. So what does a fully developed evidentiary record look like? In our eyes, it looks a lot like a trial. So what we were telling the courts was, we want a trial on these matters. First of all, that the local interests, based on health, safety, and welfare, are strong enough that they might trump the state's interests. And second of all, that there are efficient alternatives to fracking, and we want to prove to you that that's true, and that because of this, because oil and gas can still be produced economically and efficiently in Longmont, this is a lot more like the La Plata case than like the Greeley case, and we should be able to proceed. So the case made it up to the Supreme Court for oral arguments last December. The court issued its opinion in May. And really, what the court was focused on was this question of conflict. What does it really mean for a local law and a state law to conflict? I don't know if any of you are Latin scholars, but conflict actually breaks down into two Latin roots, con plus flagrari. Con meaning with or together, and flagrari meaning to strike, to strike together. So a conflict is not a close call. A conflict is not a tight squeeze. A conflict, and some courts have actually said this, means a head-on collision between the state law and the local law. There are a lot of different tests for conflict. I mentioned one materially impeded the state interests, and Bowen Edwards said that had to be done on the basis of a fully developed evidentiary record. The court also was considering another test called the forbid/authorize test, which asks, is the local government forbidding something that the state has authorized? We argued that yes, we forbid fracking, but no, the state hasn't actually authorized it. Even though they allow it to occur, there is no state regulation, state law, or any state permit that affirmatively authorizes anyone to frac, and that therefore, these two sets of laws can coexist. So is there conflict? The court said, yes, there's conflict. The court started by saying that the state has an exhaustive set of rules and regulations, basically cradle-to-brave regulating fracking. We didn't necessarily agree with that, but that's what the court held. These rules, the court said, the Supreme Court now, are pervasive, and they show that the state wants to control lots of aspects of fracking. The court then took another step. The state wants to control numerous aspects of fracking, therefore, the state has a strong interest in a uniform regulation of fracking. And because those rules wouldn't apply in Longmont since fracking would be banned, Longmont is disrupting this uniform state scheme. Longmont is disrupting this uniform state scheme. And then, the court took a further step, saying, "We didn't really mean in Bowen Edwards that this always has to be determined on the basis of a fully-developed evidentiary record. Instead, almost all of these types of cases can be determined on their face, just by looking at the local law and looking at the state law, determining the interplay between the two, and we can make a decision." Only very rarely, the court said in our case, would a trial be necessary. There are some silver linings to this. For one thing, the court did reaffirm local government's ability to regulate zoning and land use with regard to fracking, or with regard to oil and gas activity. And that local authority can even extend to technical regulations. This is something that the industry was pushing very hard and that lower courts had made holdings about, the argument that if something is technical, the local government can't regulate it, only non-technical things are within our jurisdiction. Now, that's clearly not true. The court didn't answer all of the questions that were posed by these lawsuits, I would say. The court left some lingering questions. So, you remember implied preemption is when the state occupies the field of a particular matter and leaves no room. Conflict preemption is supposed to be when there's an actual head-on collision between the state law and the local law. But here, the court found conflict preemption on the basis of the local government venturing into a field, one might say, fracking, that the state had shown it wanted to regulate uniformly. So, there's a question now of what is the practical difference between implied preemption and conflict preemption? That's something lawyers are going to scratch their heads about until we have more clarification. Another question is, what does it really mean to look at the inter... Thanks, Harold. What does it really mean to look at the interplay between a local law and a state law? Are we looking for a head-on collision still? Or is this more of a smell test to see whether it makes sense for the local law to be able to exist, once we know that the state law is out there saying something somewhat different? We're not really sure. If it is more of a smell test, that makes it harder for a local government to know in advance whether a regulation would be permissible or not. And another big question has to do with moratoria. At the same time, the Supreme Court reviewed our case, it also reviewed a case out of Fort Collins, which was very much like ours. Citizen initiative passed a year after ours, except instead of a permanent ban, it was a five-year moratorium. The court struck that down as well. So, how would a court treat a moratorium of less than five years? The Supreme Court spoke to that, but not very conclusively. So, for one thing, the court drew a contrast between the Fort Collins moratorium and a moratorium that had been imposed in Central City in an earlier case, saying that this one, the Fort Collins one, was different because it was freezing a practice that had become prevalent across the state, fracking. So, that makes a difference in determining whether a moratorium is acceptable. But then also, in contrast to that Central City case, which was a 10-month moratorium and was okay, the fracking case was for five years, and that was substantively different. That's different in kind. It's not just a temporary timeout. That's a different animal. Court went on, contrasting the Fort Collins case to another earlier case, Claridge House One, where the court held, in that earlier case, that state law preempted a one-year moratorium. So, one year, 10 months, not that different in terms of duration, but the one-year moratorium was struck down because it didn't regulate, but it forbid the activity, and it affected the statewide program of regulation in that case. Then, the court went on to compare that one-year moratorium to a statute allowing counties to impose six-month moratoriums, not on oil and gas per se, but on construction activities. So, what we have here is the Supreme Court throwing around a number of different durations and not very clearly giving us guidance as to where it might draw the line. And it might also depend on whether the court looked at the moratorium as really a temporary timeout to write regulations, or something that was trying to prevent an activity from happening, maybe for a different reason. So, that's all we really have from the court on moratoria and duration and what might be acceptable. So, going back now and changing gears to the regulations case, that actually was moving forward before the fracking case was. We had fully briefed summary judgment motions, which could have decided the case in either direction. And very abruptly, the state requested a stay of that case so that we could move on to the fracking case. The lower court granted that stay, and we maybe gained a little bit of insight into why that might have happened, when in October of 2014, you all may recall, the governor came to a compromise with Jared Polis and proponents of ballot initiatives. The state and the industry agreed to dismiss the Longmont regulations case. Also wrapped up into that compromise was the creation of a second task force, as well as the removal of a number of ballot initiatives from the ballot that year. But the dismissal of the claims by the state and the industry on our regulations included a covenant by them never to sue us on those regulations again. Now, that might not be quite as good as it sounds. There's some consideration of whether those regulations might be susceptible to a challenge as they are applied, rather than facially. And there are also maybe entities that are not subject to that compromise or that dismissal. Another thing to note about that covenant not to sue is that it would probably not apply to any amendments to regulations that happened after the dismissal took effect. Where does that leave us? It leaves us in a place where our regulations are in effect, and drilling and fracking can occur in Longmont under those regulations if an application is filed and approved. Thought it might be interesting, there's been public interest in this, the special counsel expenses, that doesn't include in-house costs, but those are outside attorneys working for the city on these cases. Any questions on that?
I have a question. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, if we changed our regulations at all, then all of the regulations, the dismissal of that would go away?
Mayor, Councilmember Finley, I wouldn't go that far. Hopefully, we would be able to structure it in such a way that the new regulations or the changed regulations might be susceptible, but not the ones that we have the covenant on. I suppose it also depends on how pervasively we amended the rules.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just remind me, was it in here? What percentage of the residential areas in Longmont are protected as a result of the regulations? Is there currently written? Is it later on in your presentation? Okay. It's close to all of it, is the answer. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. How do these, our regulations compare to the new state regulations?
Mayor, Councilmember Peck, I'd ask your clarification, which new state regulations?
Well, the regulation says they stand now with the state on oil and gas. How do they compare?
I think they're just different. One notable thing about the local regulations, maybe the most notable thing, is that it does require the operator to go through the local process, which is important in its own right. In terms of setbacks and things like that, the state now has a default 500-foot setback from occupied structures, 1,000-foot setback from high occupancy structures, hospitals and schools, that sort of thing. The state also recently had a rulemaking on large urban mitigation areas that apply to specific zones where there's enough density of generally residences that require a beefier state process. The local regulations are different because they're based on zoning, which is a more quintessentially local thing. The state doesn't consider, you know, we're going to zone this area residential, we're going to zone this area commercial. And we also have a greater setback distance of 750 feet compared to the default state distance of 500, although that's a recommended standard under our regulations. And if you meet that standard, it qualifies you for fast-track review. The state has a lot of regulations, though, and we have a fair amount of regulations as well. It would probably be too much to try to compare them all, but hopefully, that's a start.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what John's trying to get at is if the state does come up with a regulation that is, I guess, like a further setback, like in the future, let's say they say their state comes up with a 1,500-foot instead of... Then, their regulation would supersede ours in that case.
Mayor, I would say that they would both be in effect.
Okay.
The operator would have to meet the state setback, and under that example, they would be meeting the local setback.
Right. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Okay. I know that this is speculative, but I'm just, I have to ask. So, what do you think? How do you, do you think that our regulations, as they stand now, will likely hold up against the gas and oil industry for, say, the next five years or 10 years?
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, I would try to answer it more or less directly, but not quite. So, when the regulations were being developed, Eugene brought them to council and with indications of red light, yellow light, green light, you know, how safe is this? How relatively risky is this? And so, I think we have some security with that covenant not to sue. I don't think that makes us bulletproof. And it's hard to say who might challenge us and why. It's hard to say whether that would be a challenge to the regulations on their face or a challenge to the regulations as they are applied to a particular project. So, getting more specific than that, I don't think I could really do right now.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I think that's the end of our questions. Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to Special Projects Manager Brad Schole to kick off the environmental stewardship section.
Mayor, if I can interrupt, before we move on, I just wanted to recognize Dan Kramer for his work on this oil and gas litigation. He was very modest in his presentation, but Dan was the primary researcher and brief writer in both of the litigation. He argued before the Supreme Court. He represented Longmont to the best of his abilities, and I think we've gotten feedback from across the state that Dan did a great job in that litigation, and I'm very proud of him.
Well, I think we're all agreeing, hit the ball out of the park.
Well, the park was just too big. Hit the ball really hard. It was just an infinite park.
Mayor Coombs and councilmembers, my name is Brad Schole, City Manager's Office. And David Bell and I are going to be sharing some information about environmental stewardship and what are some of the things that this city's doing with respect to ongoing and active oil and gas operations on city property. I think you know that the Ryder Well was a matter of contention, as Eugene described it in the master contract. There was an agreement to close the Ryder Well, and it was thought that that would happen fairly shortly after the master contract was adopted. However, because of litigation, it did get stayed. When that stay was lifted in May of this year, we, TOP and the city, started conversations about what would be the most efficient and immediate way to plug the Ryder Well. And the plugging occurred during the summer of 2016. We did coordinate with the school district, and this is a slide of how I spent my summer. So, there's just a collage of pictures, and we have lots of them, but the plugging and abandonment process took approximately a week, and there's lots of steps involved where they pull the casing and throw cement down and do so in such a way that it protects the bore and there can't be any escape of any further type of minerals. I think David's ready to go.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, David Bell, National Resources Manager for City of Longmont. So, in addition to the consolidation of our well sites, and again, closure of some well sites, the city wanted to do some additional work to make sure that we were monitoring those sites that existed and making sure we're doing everything we could to make sure that our air and water is being protected. So, over the past three years, we've been contracting with TerraCon, who's gone out. And you can see the first slide, there is a well going in, but that well is actually a water-monitoring well. So, we've set up three monitoring wells next to each one of these well sites that we have in Longmont. Two of those are down gradient, one up gradient, so we can tell water quality coming through those sites. Again, the first photo there is of the well being drilled, and the second is a monitoring well, and that is down at Sandstone Ranch. So, over the three years we've been monitoring this, we have had clean records on all of our, all of our wells have been in compliance. Until this year, we had one well that came back with high benzene, is a Seraphini site near the tank batteries. When we found that out, we sent that information to the state, and then the state is now working with the operator to bring that into compliance. So, we hope they continue to work with the state and with us to bring things into compliance. But again, this is the first time in three years we've had anything that has shown up on our water-monitoring sites.
Just a quick question. So, my question is, so what, what was that? That's the first time I'd heard of that. So, the question is, what was the, what was the issue?
So, they did find levels of benzene above what it should be at the Seraphini tank battery site. That information was sent into the state. The state sent back information to the city and to the operators on how to mediate or remedy that. And now, the state is working with the operators to bring the compliance, and then we'll be working with the operators to make sure they follow through on that.
So, was it ground? Was it water table or just surface contamination near the well site?
So, it was through the, through the monitoring wells. So, it would've been down at where they picked it up during the well monitoring. So, it would've been probably a little lower than that. But again, what I've heard from some of the people from the county is, being around the tank batteries is something that probably came in from the surface around the batteries as opposed to the system itself, the wellheads. However, again, that's when the state will give us final answers on.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. When did this happen, David?
We got that this summer. I think in August is when we got the final report, and then we sent that into the state at that time.
Do you know when they expect to have this under control? Did they give you a timeline?
So, it's not that it's, as far as in compliance or out of control. So, in compliance, they're working on that, and they have timelines to bring that into compliance through the state.
Do you know what those are?
I don't, and we'll be working with the state again. They sent us just their letter saying that they expect us and them to be working together to bring this into compliance. We'll be happy to give updates as that moves forward.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
So, in addition to the water quality testing, we also, for the past year, have been working with TerraCon and the state of Colorado to do air quality monitoring. This is going out to the sites and actually sampling the air quality in those areas, and they're testing for methane with this, with this test. So, at all of our sites out there, they've tested... for methane with this, with this test. So at all of our sites out there, they tested over the past, over this last year, they have found nothing out there as far as methane and any other sampling sites. And then we also have been, this past year, collaborating with Boulder County Public Health, and they have been going out with an optical camera that actually can look at all the joints and the pipes and the fixtures out there to make sure that those are all in compliance, there's no leaking there. Where the last test really looked for a certain gas, this doesn't really tell you what gas is out there, but it can see in real time if there's any leaking or any gas escaping from into the pipes. And again, in this, this is Boulder County who has purchased this material. They're doing it on all the well sites in Boulder County, but again, through some collaboration, we've been able to have them come to the Longmont sites. The nice thing that we were able to remind Boulder County is now with the conservation easements, they definitely have a vested interest in all of these sites as well. So this partnership has been nice. The individual who is doing that work for the county, when he goes out and he finds a joint that has a leak in it, he has been able to get back to the operators. He said every one of those leaks has been brought to compliance within the timeframe, and that basically is a five-day compliance they have on that before it moves on to being turned over to the state. On those, again, you don't know what the gas is, but it's just a real-time look at leaks.
Councilmember Peck?
David, again, one more question. Are those gas pipes above ground or below?
Those are above ground.
Okay, thanks.
And that is, I believe, my last slide.
Councilmember Longmore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Back to the benzene pollution or detection. You don't know when that'll be mitigated?
I don't at this time.
I'd like to ask, so you get back to council when that just gets a green light and is cleared and ready to go, as well as be able to report to council on any other issues that come up around oil and gas. Thank you.
Mayor Cosmo will definitely do that.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Christensen?
Other questions for David? Oh, go ahead.
A couple more little questions. How much, that benzene level, how much above the regular, the standard is that? Do we know?
Again, at this point, since we've just sent this into the state and we're working with them, we know it's above, but we don't know what that percentage is as far as what the cap is or compliance is, and that we know that has gone above compliance, and that's what, you know, had to send it into the state. Again, I'd be happy to give an update on that, so.
Yeah, when we get the update, okay. And the other question I had is, just to clarify for me, I, we don't have injection wells. Those are recycled, right? Are they recycled or is the water, I mean, the water, the fracking fluids, are those, when you're talking about a closed pit looped system, that means it's recycled, it's not shipped?
So as far as I'm going to, I make this, what I know, and I'll look back on my show to Dan Wolfer's who worked in this, but it's all removed from our sites at this, at this point, so there's nothing that's, that's reinjected on any of the Longmont sites. It's all removed from the area as far as the produced waters.
Where does it go?
Mayor Coombs and members of council, so in our regulations, we require closed systems, essentially what that means. So back in the 1970s, wells were completed and the produced water was literally dumped into an open pit adjacent to the well site. That is now fully contained, and so a closed system means that it's contained into a container, it is then shipped out, and it is either recycled and/or reinjected in an injection well. But there are no injection wells allowed in the city under our regulations or in our master contract.
But where are, where are they being sent?
I believe there are injection wells in Weld County. I can't tell you specifically, but I believe there's some in the Platteville area, about 10 miles or 15 miles to the east of us.
Okay, thank you.
So council, any further questions? One thing I do want to point out with the information that David has, keep in mind, we would not even have that information if we were not out testing the water ourselves, which, which I think is a testament to this city's commitment to environmental protection. We had a choice, and we actually have been doing this testing on the city's dollar. As we go forward with new wells as they're drilled, they're going to be, that cost will be borne by the operator. But I believe it's important that we continue to monitor, and we will monitor those wells and the water quality for the duration of the well, and even after the well is plugged and abandoned for a timeframe so that we know whether or not there is any contamination occurring. And I also want to say, it's not a perfect world. You can do all the testing in the world that you want. You may never have it perfect, but I can tell you that the technology and the approach that we're taking is fairly unique in the state. There are not many municipalities that I'm aware of that are going to this level, that Longmont is, to check for water and air quality. So I think it's, even though we found something, part of what that tells me, that's a good thing. That tells us that we're doing our job and we're seeing it, and we are alerting the regulatory agencies to a situation that needs to be corrected. And we obviously will keep the public and the council informed as that goes forward. And again, you know, we're looking at 13 different wells right now around the city, okay? So next steps going forward.
Councilmember Bagley, do you have a question?
I've got a red mic, Dale.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You stole my thunder. I was going to say, I was going to point out that that last bit, and I, anybody at that podium on this topic is either very emotional because they're passionate about stopping fracking, or they are passionate for fracking, or they're like you, where you go, oh my gosh, you're getting caught between the two. So you did quite well. The, I just, I just wanted to point out that, yeah, I mean, we just heard it, but the Ryder well has been plugged and abandoned, right? And so I remember back when, during the first oil and gas task force, or oil and gas task force at the state level, that was the poster child of, you know, the state screw-ups. And even if, David, you were, you were able to say it was X times the state limit, the Ryder well was 100 times the permitted limit, and there's nothing they could do. Their answer to mitigate the damage was, leave it alone, the environment will self-correct. You know, so I mean, I saw in your face the, oh my gosh, I don't have the answer. But, but even if you had the answer, that's ultimately what the answer would have been. But I just, I just thought, yeah, water quality monitoring, air quality monitoring, and optical gas imaging are three things that, five years ago, we weren't doing. And so watching, you know, it doesn't matter how many, I mean, yeah, we can't protect the rest of the state, but as far as Longmont's concerned, we're doing, it sounds like we're doing the things that we're supposed to be doing to at least protect our little corner of the universe. And so you already said it, but rather than you saying, we're doing it well, I wanted to say, hey, what I'm seeing is you're doing it well. So thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So Dale, you mentioned that, moving forward, that the city won't be doing the monitoring of the air and water?
We won't be paying for it.
We will be paying for it?
We will not be paying the cost, but we will certainly be getting the data.
Who will be doing it and who will be paying for it?
I believe the firm has to be agreed to by the city, and we'd probably prefer to stay with the firm that we have, TerraCon. That would be something that we would look at if and when we get an application that comes forward.
And to tag along with Mayor Protem Bagley, this monitoring catches it after the fact with the purpose of trying to prevent it from continuing to occur. And I think that's really unfortunate, but that's the way the world is. I mean, we'd like to not even have it happen, but let's understand it, you know, nobody wants a traffic accident either. So, and being able to detect it with Longmont's regulations in place like this, we are doing a lot more to protect the environment than we were able, even able to do in the past because we didn't have access to the well sites to begin with. So I would like to think that we are doing our part as a city to do what we can with the environment, and would like to know that we could put someone on staff that could actually evaluate and analyze the data so we can know, we can understand it, and we can get good answers. So, thank you.
And council, I do want to also note, in the case of the Ryder well, even though, again, it's been plugged and abandoned, we are continuing to monitor the water out there, because I think that's just the smart thing to do. Whenever you've had that kind of an operation going on, to catch it as close as you can to its source of contamination is a good thing, as opposed to letting the plume extend for hundreds or thousands of feet before you find the contamination. Much, much bigger issue to try to resolve at that point. So we do intend to stay with that and continue it.
So one, just a quick question. How much concrete does it take to plug a well?
Sounds like a bad joke.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
When you have like a well that goes down, you know, a couple thousand feet or sometimes 7,000 feet, do they inject concrete, like, how far down does the concrete go when they plug a well with concrete?
You know, Mayor, if I was a petroleum engineer, I'd be able to tell you that with more precision. What I do know is that the, the concrete plugging and abandoning is a process that is both inspected and regulated and is intended to provide a firm seal over the duration of that well. So that wasn't necessarily the case, by the way. Wells that were plugged and abandoned 30, 40, 50 years ago, sometimes were plugged with wood, they were plugged in any number of different ways. And so just like everything else in life, as you go forward, you learn from that, you engineer better solutions, and you install those. And so my guess is that will continue to evolve as well going forward, that we will continue to plug and abandon them and maybe even more complete ways.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing is, is that the, you know, the remediation that, that will need to occur, whether it's at the seraphini well or the remediation at the Ryder well, the goal is that you have to get clean tests. You have to get tests that come back that are below the standards. And so that will continue until such time as that is achieved. And there's a number of different ways that that can be done. Again, that is an area, though, that is under state authority, not under the city's authority. So going forward, as, as Dan and Eugene have said, the, as of May of this year, the clock is ticking on oil and gas exploration in the city. We have our regulations in place. We also have a master contract and operating agreement. It is now our obligation to implement underneath that in, in the most appropriate way and to conform to those regulations and those contracts. The, the regulations provide for review of applications as they come in, and our contract will guide all of our activity with regards to work on city property, which was under TOP operating. One of the changes that, that has occurred, again, from the, the map that showed all the wells that were potential, we now have about 11 consolidated sites. And you can see those, those are the red squares on these maps. There's one to the north of Union, two or three to the west, and about three or four to the east of the reservoir. A lot of those are in order to gain access underneath the reservoir as opposed to drilling within the reservoir. Similarly, on the south side of Highway 119, there are three sites, three consolidated well sites in that area as well. In this past summer, TOP Operating introduced us to a joint operator that they have entered into an agreement with. That is something that is allowed under the master contract and the operating agreement. The name of the firm is Cub Creek. They are a firm that has a fairly long history of operating here in the state of Colorado. Cub Creek, C-U-B-C-R-E-E-K. Again, they, they have a long history of working here in Colorado. The CEO of Cub Creek is Mr. Bob Gardner, and he is here this evening. Bob is also open to taking any questions that the council may have, either with regards to his company or his operations or, or what he is proposing to do with regards to the joint operating contract with TOP. We believe this is a positive change, if you will, knowing that, without being disparaging or anything, but frankly, TOP Operating had some, some problems. Our review of the record doesn't show any of that for Cub Creek. They appear to be not only environmentally sensitive to their work, but also socially sensitive to the work that goes on. The idea that we need to be good neighbors and to work together and not just sort of run roughshod over, over what's going on. As staff that's been involved with this, I see this as a, as a positive thing moving forward. Cub Creek is and has been operating in immediate vicinity just west of the town of Mead for the past several months, if not longer than that.
Councilmember Peck, do you have a quick question?
Do, sorry, just to back up a little bit, Dale, on these 11 sites, how many wells do you think will be per site?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, I don't think I know the exact number, but it is multiple wells at these sites. So in other words, if you looked at all the, all the dots that were on the map, we're consolidating those down. It doesn't mean that we're eliminating wells necessarily. What it means is we're eliminating the footprint and the surface impact of those wells into a more concentrated location. So I would say there, there are certainly multiple wells, and that's what you see in current development practices in, in the Wattenberg Field. I would also say that the majority, if not all, of the wells that are being drilled recently have been of the horizontal nature, as opposed to the vertical well that simply drilled down vertically and fracked. Horizontal wells are drilled, and then they go for one to two miles horizontally. And so it is a different technology and a different drilling approach that's being taken these days. And so it still conforms with our strategy of consolidated sites, but long answer is, I don't know exactly how many until, again, applications come in for particular pads.
Okay, and these will all be fracking under Union Reservoir?
Not all.
More than likely.
Some of them will be. I would say that some of them in the, in the northern area here certainly would go underneath the reservoir. They're intended to, they, they hold the leases underneath the reservoir. Again, what we're trying to achieve with the consolidated sites is to hold the activity back from the surface of the reservoir. It is not intended to necessarily prevent fracking or, or completion of wells under the reservoir. And again, these are two miles under the reservoir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
And what was the name of the CEO again?
Bob Gardner.
Bob Gardner. And then, so, and then just to be clear, it's, this is the maximum amount of well size, this is what is, these are what are permitted, correct?
Correct.
But they could do less?
Correct, and I'm going to talk about that.
If they choose to.
That's the next part of my presentation. I'm going to talk about that.
All right, I'll shut up then. It's always ruining the end of the movie. Sorry, Dale.
You're going in the right direction. The other thing, so speaking of that, as Councilmember Bagley has told us, we are trying to coordinate and work with Cub Creek, and we have been for the last month or so, to try to see if we can't have a reduction in those drill sites. And again, it's a reduction of the 11 drill sites. And what I will tell you is those discussions have been going very well. They're very open to having those discussions with us. It could have the option also to reduce or possibly eliminate the tank batteries, which, on these drawings, the tank batteries are the black rectangles. One of them is right adjacent to Road 26, and the other one is to the, to the east side of the reservoir. Those are fairly massive areas potentially for tanks, on, on the magnitude of tens and tens of tanks, if you've seen some of these sites out in the county. So part of what we're trying to also achieve is elimination of those tank batteries. Not only are they a visual issue, but they require truck, trucking in and out of all the material as opposed to a pipeline. I believe it's, it's clear that a pipeline is a safer mode of transportation. Is it a perfectly safe mode? No. I don't know of any perfectly safe modes, but it is certainly far safer. It also has less risk for accidents or spills and those kinds of things. And so we are also trying to work on, on achieving that. And so, we are also trying to work on, on achieving that particular objective as well. And the third bullet there is, is that as we move forward, as I mentioned to you, we have about thirteen of these old vertical wells that have been drilled, many of them twenty, thirty years ago. And we do have the potential to plug and abandon some of those wells. In order to have a potential reduction of drill sites, we need better and more information with regards to the geology beneath the area. And that is best achieved through what is called a seismic survey. These surveys have been conducted really throughout the, the Wattenberg Field. It's a routine operation that operators undertake. And again, it is to provide a, a much clearer picture of the subservice geology. It provides information with regards to production zones and, and likely ability to produce or not produce. What we do know is we're, we're near the edge of the Wattenberg Field. And so, seismic surveys of this nature will, could dictate the number of wells that it may take in order to perform and, and, and complete a particular zone. And so, this is something that is contemplated in our master contract and was anticipated. It does require a separate agreement, which we are currently in process of, of negotiating and drafting that particular agreement. And that agreement also takes council's approval in order for it to be enacted. So, we will be, and as directed otherwise, we will be presenting you with a seismic survey agreement. And just to talk about that a little bit, it's an operation that has been done right outside my home, probably within a hundred, two hundred feet of my house. It, it is one that goes very quickly in this entire zone that we're talking about, both north and south of the reservoir, not only on the city property, but they're also requesting permission from the private property owners where they can. It, it's an operation that would last seven to ten days. They would intend to try to do that during the winter when the ground is frozen so as to minimize surface damage. The agreement will call for them to remediate any, any damage that might be done, certainly on city property. We are also working to make sure that it is set back from, from other sensitive areas, whether it's a water well or a structure or those types of things. And certainly residences, we want to keep them back from, from those structures. It is, it is also something that they have agreed to provide us the information, which is also very rare. Typically, when the surveys are done, that's very sort of confidential information that they want to hold on to. And what we're requiring in this permit is that that information be provided to the city, for the obvious reason that it's, we are the mineral owner and it's our city. It's, it's our community. We also need to know, not only as the mineral owner, but also as the local government. And so, they're agreeing to do that. But again, I'll, we're continuing to try to work through some of the issues on that particular agreement before we bring it forward for your consideration, which will likely be in the January timeframe, just to fast forward a little bit on next steps. It's gonna be one of the next steps. And again, as I mentioned, once we get that information and once Cub Creek has that information, we will then be able to solidify which of these well sites we will be able to relinquish and not drill on. Our goal is to reduce it. We don't know how much we can reduce it until we get that data, but suffice it to say, we, we know it's several that could be reduced. Some of the ones we'd want to reduce are, are ones that are either closer into a reservoir or to like Sandstone Park and those kinds of areas. So, that's what we're trying to look at, is to step back even further than what we've already achieved in the master contract and the operating agreement and further restrict those surface disruption areas. And I meant questions. So, I threw a lot of stuff at you. You may recall, back in 2011, 2012, was it 2011, Cougar Land was, had approached us to do seismic survey at that time, and they were doing it on behalf of Anadarko. And Anadarko does not hold the leases, and, and they subsequently withdrew their request, and so they never did the work. It was in that same timeframe that literally thousands of acres were, seismic survey was conducted in a huge area of the Wattenberg Field, so. So, those are, so, main takeaways are, we are working with a, a, a new operator who has a joint operating agreement with, with Top. I believe that's a positive thing going forward. Again, I didn't mention much about Bob, but he's from the Colorado area, he's a School of Mines graduate, much sharper than myself, and I, I appreciate working with him. He's, he's the type of gentleman that I can certainly communicate with, and, and I will also say this, that Bob was really instrumental in getting the Ryder well closed quickly. He stepped in and, and really helped us in our discussions with Top to get that well closed as soon as we could. And I, I appreciated that, that work on his part, so. With that, I'll take questions.
Well, just anecdotally, it seems like one of the statements you made, that running, you know, transmission lines, pipelines, you know, on the surface, it seems like that's gotta be safer than running hundreds of diesel trucks up and down because that naturally pollutes our atmosphere and produces a lot of winter smog and summer smog. You know, pipelines are not flawless, but you know, you, you always have to pick the lesser of two evils sometimes. And, and with the fact that you're eliminating the potential, you can eliminate a lot of those batteries of tanks, that sometimes those outgas with.
Or they fail.
Yeah. And.
I will say also that Councilmember Peck has, has brought up some really good questions with regards to who is the regulatory agency on the pipelines, and we're gonna talk with you a little bit about that tonight because you've also brought that question forward to us as well. And so, we wanna address that. Again, that's, Mayor, as you said, we, we live in an imperfect world, but that's why you hopefully design things to be reliable and to be safe. So, that's.
Okay. Councilmember Peck?
Me again. Dale, I understand that there's a fault line near or under the reservoir. Is that, how are you dealing with that?
So, Councilmember Peck, I have heard that same sort of anecdotal discussion, if you will. Once again, the seismic survey information will provide us a lot better information about not only is it there, but where is it, what depth is it, what, what is it, sort of the, the constituency of it.
Okay.
It's all good information to understand as we go forward so that we don't inadvertently either cause a, a, a more difficult drilling operation or one that, that is impeded in some way. And so, I think it's information that the city would like to know, and I think it's also information that the operator wants to know.
Okay. And one other thing, I understand the pipeline being safer than trucking it out, however, how do you get the fracking fluid in? Is that trucked in?
So, Mayor Combs and Councilmember Peck, correct. That, that's always gonna be brought in on truck, but quantity wise, it's a much smaller quantity. So, instead of hundreds of truckloads of, say, produced water that's coming back, the actual fracking fluid is a small percent of the total. And so, they can actually bring in the water to do the fracking. They then have to, and again, I'm not an expert, I'm not a petroleum engineer, but I believe they then develop their, their fracking fluid and, and then inject that and do the fracking operation. That then flows back, and I believe that then goes into the produced line and not trucked out as well. So, we're trying to take the natural gas, there's three pipelines. One of them is for the natural gas, one of them is for water, and the third one is for the oil.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob and, and Mr. Gardner might be able to answer that better than myself. I would guess he could, but. All right? Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you.
And I'm turning it back over to Brad, I believe, to talk a little bit about pipelines.
Mayor and council, Brad School. As you know, this is a pretty broad topic, so we've got a lot of talent that, that works on this particular project, and most of that team is here tonight. So, pipeline regulations are as complex as, as you might guess, and there are various levels of it. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is involved, the Pipeline and Hazardous Waste Safety Administration is involved at the federal level, the Colorado PUC is involved at the state level, and Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is involved at the state level also. So, the pipeline regulations are involved in what is the design and what is the construction, and the inspection occurs during that process. There is also monitoring that in the event that the, actually, the pipeline operators install monitoring systems. So, in the event that there's a, a change in pressure in one of the lines and they have the automatic shutdown provisions, and they can send out somebody to take a look at it. And I think Brian is the next guy.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Brian Schumacher with City Planning Staff. So, I know you've gotten a lot of information, and I'm trying not to repeat, but I'm gonna give a little bit of overview about some of the state and local regulations and review procedures, both at the local and state level, again, without trying to repeat what some of the others have said this evening. As noted by Eugene and Dan in part of their presentation, since 2012, the state has updated some of their oil and gas rules several times, started in 2012 with setback rulemaking. It also included other areas. Some of them were, were response to the Governor's Task Force that precipitated in additional notification and consultation requirements with local governments as well as property owners, as well as additional mitigation requirements. All of these were in an attempt to try to address some of the local concerns that were raised as since the 2012. So, a couple of those besides the setbacks that are listed on this slide, a couple of the rulemaking that occurred, as Dan mentioned, there was a rulemaking regarding larger scale facilities. And that, by state definition, that is eight wells or greater, and there's also a certain production level that's associated with that, whereby there's additional consultation with local governments regarding those larger facilities. There was also rulemaking at the state regarding spill reporting requirements, and then also some rulemaking regarding groundwater monitoring, but certainly not to the extent that the, what the city may require under our current regulations. So, a little bit about setbacks, again, this is a rulemaking that started in 2012 at the state and concluded, I believe, in 2013. At the time, the city was developing our regulations in 2012. The state rules for setbacks were 150 foot in rural areas, 350 feet in urbanized area, which was referred to at the time, high density areas. And that's how we came up, we were working through that, using those standards to develop our recommended standard of 750 foot at the time in terms of setback for, from occupied structures and residential areas. So, the state setback requirements now are 500 feet in all areas, and then there's also a special requirement for 1,000 feet from high occupancy buildings such as schools and hospitals. So, this map, I'll try to give you a little bit information about what this all means in terms of the color differentiation. The pink color represents the state setback requirement, the current requirement in terms of the 500 foot or 1,000 foot setback from occupied buildings. The purple area on the map includes those state setback areas that overlap with city residential zoning. And then, the blue areas, which are a little bit far and few between, but those are the city residential zoning areas that are outside of the state setback buffer areas, so that 500 or 1,000 foot setback buffer area. So, this map does not include the city 750 foot recommended setback requirements, so that if we did include that, it, it'd cover a little bit larger area. It's also important to note that obviously as development occurs and there's additional residential development built and/or areas that are plotted, that more of this area will be restricted from oil and gas development. One area in particular that I might note, that there will be several large annexations, fairly large in a relative sense, coming before council in the near future, will be some annexations that have residential zoning along the north side of Rogers Road between Airport Road and Hoover Road, which would add to the area that's colored in blue on this map. That would no longer allow surface oil and gas operations in the city. So, a little bit about background on the, with the Ryder well closing. In 2013, Top, some, Top Operating submitted an application for the upper Adrian site, which was to be the Ryder well replacement, and that's basically due east of the, where the, the previous Ryder well, which was plugged and abandoned by Trail Ridge Middle School. This is being relocated, was to be relocated east of County Line Road on the Upper Adrian site. And at the time, Top was proposing just one well for the replacement of that Ryder well, and that was consistent with the master contract. Since the fracking ban litigation was in process, that application was put on hold, and subsequently, that application lapsed. And so, anything moving forward in terms of that replacement well would have to start over in terms of that application process. I think it's also important to note that to date, since the fracking ban was overturned, we have not had any applications submitted to the city for review. So, Eugene mentioned about this, and I won't reiterate or duplicate what he talked about, but I just want to summarize a few things regarding our local permitting process about the two-track process. So, under the administrative review option, again, it's required to meet all the required and recommended standards. There is a requirement that under either, it has to, either it goes under administrative review or public hearing review, that there is a notice requirement for surrounding property owners as well as any registered neighborhood groups within an area to be notified of an application. If a property were, or a project were to be approved administratively, those approvals may be appealed by the applicant, the property owner, or the city manager under the current code requirements. The public hearing process or review track, again, if not all required and recommended standards are met, then we'd have to go through a review process that would involve a neighborhood meeting before an application was submitted, and then a public hearing would be required before the planning and zoning commission. The appeal process under that track, that's a public hearing track, is, it's much broader. It includes any, any party that would receive notification of a public hearing as well as any resident of the city of Longmont, and in addition to the other peeling bodies under the administrative approval process. This was shown earlier, and I'm just gonna touch on a couple of items. Eugene mentioned the voluntary and mandatory standards. Under the 750 foot setback from occupied buildings under our current regulations regarding that recommended standard, it also includes setbacks from residential lots, even if there might not be a, a building or residence on that lot, and it also includes that 750 foot setback from recreational areas as well as a recommended standard. And then, in terms of the 300 foot setback from water bodies, that's a recommended standard. We also have a minimum standard that's current, that's also in our code. That's a requirement under our riparian and stream and wetland setbacks that would need to meet that minimum standard. And for example, it'd be 150 foot from any reservoir or perennial streams. and, for example, it'd be 150-foot from any reservoir or perennial streams and other sensitive riparian areas. And then, as mentioned before, Dale mentioned about the seismic survey. This is considered an oil and gas operation or local regulations. And in terms of the review process steps, on either private or public property, seismic operations on private property are subject to a local administrative review process. In addition, on a public property, such as city property, city council would need to review and approve the seismic survey. And then, just also note on the third item, that the seismic surveys, since they're considered an oil and gas operation, they're also subject to the residential surface activity prohibition. And then finally, I think this is my last line, you're hopeful for that, just a little bit about the state process. Obviously, there's a joint process in terms of the local review, and then there's also the state component associated with that. There's a two-step component associated with the state review, one is the Form 2A, which is a location assessment, and the other one is the Form 2, which is a permit to drill. So the Form 2A, in a sense, is kind of an overall development plan for a site. It's mostly surface activity, what's going to happen in terms of the total number of wells, as well as other permanent features on the site, whereas the Form 2, the permit to drill, relates mostly specifically to each drill for permit, and that is mostly related to below-surface operations. So as part of this, the state and the applicants will be required to notify the city of state permit applications, and then as part of this operation, and working cooperatively with Cup Creek Energy, we would request that the Cup Creek coordinate with the state and local submittals as we go through this review process. So with that, any comments, questions regarding either the state or local regulations or permit process, or we can open it up for public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So if I'm Energy Company A, and I come to the city and say your voluntary process is to owners, and I'm just going to do the mandatory, goes to P&amp;Z, and they approve it or not, if they don't approve it, what happens? And if P&amp;Z approves it and it's appealed, what happens?
Well, if it went to Plan Zoning Commission and it was denied, the applicant would have the opportunity to appeal that decision to city council. Likewise, if the application were approved by Plan Zoning Commission, then there are a list of property interest parties that could appeal that decision up to city council. And again, it's anybody that would receive notice of the application, it could be the applicant, if we put conditions of approval on it, that the applicant didn't agree with it. It could be any resident of the city of Longmont could appeal that decision up to city council, and so that appeal would come up to city council, and under our current code, there's a requirement that an appeal hearing be held by city council within 60 days of that appeal period.
And if city council denies, what happens?
Well, if city council were to deny the application, then the applicant could appeal that to the court system.
All right. Okay, I think that's all the questions from the council. Why don't we take a 10-minute break before we start the comments from the public?
So we're at the public comment part of our meeting, so the first person up is Karen And state your name and address for the record, and it's a three-minute time.
Thank you, counsel and Mr. Mayor. My name's Karen Dyke. I'm at 708 Hayden Court. In December of 2014, the state of New York enacted a ban on hydraulic fracturing within the state. Part of their decision was based on the 2014 release of the first compendium by Concerned Health Professionals of New York. This was the first time that findings from medical and scientific literature, government and industry reports, and journalistic investigations were brought into one document. On November 17th, the fourth edition of this was published, and in the last year, there were an additional 200 reports added to that compendium. These emerging trends were found in the studies this year. There's growing evidence that regulations simply are not capable of preventing harm. Fracking threatens drinking water. Drilling and fracking emissions contribute to toxic air pollution and smog at levels known to have health impacts. Public health problems associated with drilling and fracking, including reproductive impacts and occupational health and safety problems, are increasingly well documented. Natural gas is a bigger threat to the climate than previously believed. Earthquakes are a consequence of drilling and fracking-related activities in many locations. Fracking infrastructure poses serious potential risks to those living near it. Drilling and fracking activities can bring naturally occurring radioactive materials to the surface. Economic instabilities of fracking further exacerbate public health risk. Fracking raises issues of environmental justice. Healthcare professionals are increasingly calling for bans or moratoria until the full range of potential health hazards from fracking are understood. This includes the American Medical Association. Several of the speakers who are following will be referencing studies in this compendium, and you will be given a copy of that document. A few months ago, I came here to plead for a moratorium so that the regs could be reviewed and updated. So my questions for this council, will the regs be updated for better protection, and will you consider a moratorium until that is completed? The Broomfield City Council tonight is voting on whether or not they're going to put a moratorium in place. The county of Boulder has a moratorium in place, and I'm wondering how this council could work with those government entities to put a moratorium in place here, and that here in Boulder County, we can look at how we can better protect our citizens. Physicians for Social Responsibility called for a ban on fracking, stating, "We cannot stay healthy in an unhealthy environment." So thank you very much, I enjoyed and appreciated the presentation.
Thank you. Judith Blackburn?
Mayor Coombs and Council, Judith Blackburn, 3724 Oakwood Drive. I'm heartened to hear about the ongoing monitoring of released gases and all the other things of that very informative report. But I do have a question. Will we monitor and look at more than just the leaks? In other words, my understanding is those condensate tanks that we see that look like innocent farm buildings in some ways, release a certain amount of gases purposefully, and these are partly what is to blame for this widespread scientific findings in the report that Karen mentioned about the harms. So my question is, will we look at more than the leaks? Will we look at the ongoing process itself? And will we honor citizens' complaints if they are feeling ill and/or smelling strange things as a result of being in proximity to the oil and gas development? I hope this will be the first of many forums taken by the council and the staff relative to oil and gas development. My hope is that we will bring science to the table, as we are this evening, and I want to say that at the conclusion of this study that Karen mentioned, which is done yearly by this New York group of physicians and healthcare workers, that all the regulations in the world cannot prevent harm from this oil and gas development process. So whatever else we do, I think we have to look at potential of temporary moratoriums and/or slowing down processes, and I do think the dual regulation tracks that were mentioned tonight will have that effect to a certain extent. My section on this report concerns air pollution, which it turns out is a lot more complicated than we've been led to believe. It's not just the benzene and formaldehyde and other unpronounceable volatile organic substances that are part of the process, but study after study shows that the ozone layer, the ozone in this area has increased something like 17 times over the allowable amount along the front range here, and this was measured right in Boulder, at the Boulder Atmospheric Observatory, in a study published just this summer. So let's keep working on this. Thank you all very much for what you have done so far.
Eve Palmer?
Good evening. My name is Eve Palmer. I live at 2129 Squire Street here in Longmont, and I'm here to discuss my concerns about water contamination. And hearing that there is a fault line under Union Reservoir, and that there are plans to drill under it, to frac under it, as well as get as close as 100-feet from it, I am particularly concerned about some of the examples found in the compendium that Karen mentioned of incidents that were, findings that were given just over this last year in various locations in the U.S. Some of those examples are a March 2016 Stanford University study that confirmed findings by the EPA that fracking-related operations had contaminated underground drinking water sources in Pavilion, Wyoming via defective casings, spills and leaks, and underground migration into aquifers. In May of 2016, sampling downstream of fracking wastewater In May of 2016, sampling downstream of fracking wastewater disposal facility in West Virginia, the USGS documented the presence of hazardous fracking waste in Wolf Creek. In Pennsylvania, over 240 private drinking water wells have been contaminated or have dried up as a result of drilling and fracking operations over a seven-year period. The U.S. Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry found chemical contamination of some private water wells in Dim Rock, Pennsylvania posed to health risk and made the water unsuitable for drinking. In April of 2016, in the aftermath of the spring 2016 flooding, the El Paso Times documented plumes and sheens of chemicals from tipped-over storage tanks in inundated oil wells and fracking sites entering rivers and streams. Duke University study found in April that accidental spills of fracking wastewater have contaminated surface water and soils throughout North Dakota where more than 9,700 wells have been drilled in the past decade. Levels of contaminants often exceed federal drinking water guidelines. An investigation of the Barnett Shale by ABC affiliate in Dallas found numerous violations by operators who ignored regulations that require sealing vertical well pipes with cement sheath to protect groundwater from gas migrating upwards into overlying aquifers. These demonstrate a variety of ways these contaminants can reach our water sources. And here, we're discussing drilling right next to Union Reservoir, or underneath Union Reservoir.
Thank you.
I guess that's my time. Thank you.
Rafael Ozombella? I probably butchered that, but...
Good evening. Rafael Ozombella, 1440 White Hall Drive, which is close to 1,500 feet from the Ryder Well, former Ryder Well. I have five questions for you. All cited studies from the compendium prior to my questions in support of my concerns. There is evidence now present that connects fracking with public health effects. Some of these are asthma attacks are known to increase near fracking areas. There is an increase in premature births and high-risk pregnancies. Fracking substances are known to cause endocrine disruption, including decreased sperm counts. By several measures, evidence for fracking-related health problems is emerging across the United States. In Pennsylvania, as the number of gas wells increase in a community, so do rates of hospitalization. Drilling and fracking operations are correlated with elevated motor vehicle fatalities, asthma, self-reported skin and respiratory problems, ambulance runs and emergency room visits, infant deaths, birth defects, high-risk pregnancies, premature birth, and low birth weight. Benzene levels in ambient air surrounding drilling and fracking operations are sufficient to elevate risk for future cancers in both workers and nearby residents, according to studies. Animal studies show that two dozen chemicals commonly used in fracking operations are endocrine disruptors that can variously disrupt organ systems, lower sperm counts, and cause reproductive harm. Here's the studies. July 18th, 2016, "Living near fracking operations significantly increases asthma attacks." According to a Johns Hopkins University study of 35,000 medical records of people with asthma in north-central Pennsylvania, the data shows that those who live near a higher number of, or larger, such as in condensed wells, active gas wells were 1.5 to four times more likely to suffer asthma attacks compared to those who live farther away. Parenthetically, I would note that both my 17-year-old daughter and myself have asthma, and that concerns me. Second study, October 8th, 2015, pregnant women who live near fracking operations in Pennsylvania were at a 40% increased risk for giving birth prematurely and a 30% increased risk for having obstetrician-labeled high-risk pregnancies. This according to a study by Johns Hopkins, Bloomberg School of Public Health, and other researchers. I have a third study which goes on lengthily. However, I would just say that on October 25th, this study is the first to demonstrate that endocrine-disrupting chemicals, which are commonly used in fracking operations, can harm the reproductive health of mice at levels of exposure that are realistic for human exposure. So my questions are: One, how are you going to monitor the health of people who live in our city? Will you alert women or who are pregnant or contemplating pregnancy to be alert for signs and symptoms of high-risk pregnancy? Three, will you have a meeting with area healthcare providers to watch for and report symptoms of health problems known to occur in fracking? Will you alert residents? This is for when there are reports of public health concern from healthcare providers. And will you bear the, who will bear the cost for medical care of Longmont residents? Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha Williams?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Marsha Williams, 11627 North 75th Street. I'm going to talk a little bit about the agricultural impact, even though I know that you're not contemplating putting wells on a farm right now, this day. But I'm a third-generation farmer, living very near Longmont, and I have been a master gardener and a permaculturist, as well as a farmer's daughter and farm, and I have a farm, and we do farming. And I understand from all the various studies that I have read, I'm a study nerd. I've been a former teacher for a very long time, and I always talk to my students about trying to look things up and find out some factual stuff instead of going on hearsay and opinions. And from the various research that I read from scientists, drilling and fracking, well, first of all, it obviously will take some, certain amounts of agricultural land out of production in the nearby area because of the fact that air and water and soil contamination is not contained in a certain specific site. Air pollution moves around. The wind moves air pollution around. The contamination in soils moves around because of the moisture in the soil. And the aquifer pollution is prevalent much further away than the 700 to 1,000 feet that we're proposing. But I do want to take a moment to say that I was very impressed with the presentation, and I think the regulations have been improved greatly. But regulations do not do the same thing as a ban or even a moratorium until more information is, you know, developed. And there were a large number of people in this town that wanted no fracking. So even though the regulations, I think, are much better, and it was a very useful presentation, I don't think that regulations are going to solve all of the health issues and the land issues and air and water pollution issues. I just don't think they will. I think they're helping, but they won't solve it. In California recently, not too recently, two years ago, fracking and wastewater was illegally injected into aquifers. And I understand you're doing everything possible to not let illegal things happen, but sometimes they do. And that threatened crucial irrigation supplies way further from the well sites than was anticipated, much further away. And this was during a time of severe drought. Well, we're having a drought now in Colorado. And so that's one issue, to say nothing of the water that's needed to facilitate the fracking. Potential water and air contamination puts soil quality as well as livestock health at risk. Some of the same things that you heard other speakers talk about are happening to livestock in terms of especially endocrine disruption. Farmers also are very concerned about...
I'm sorry, but you only get three minutes.
Okay. Can I just finish this sentence? They're very, very concerned about their organic certification status if they're near fracking. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Mattson?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and counsel. I do really appreciate the information that has been presented tonight. And listening to the people that have come up to speak, I mean, they really care about their health. But it's, they're not only caring for their own health, but they're caring for the community. And I really appreciate that. One element of fracking that was mentioned at the beginning of these talks that I have not heard mentioned from any city staff tonight was the issue of radioactive substances that come to the surface with the produced water and the mud from the drill bits, and the disposal of this material. I mean, how would that be disposed of? And so I'm just going to go ahead and present the questions first, and then bring one of the studies. So how is the radioactive waste going to be disposed of? And what is the route for solid waste trucks to move through the neighborhoods? And is there a contingency plan for any accidents involving these trucks? And is there a plan to notify residents within a few miles of any fracking to check for the radon levels in their homes? So there are high levels of radiation documented in fracking wastewater in many homes, and the radon levels have gone up considerably in nearby homes. So is there a plan to notify residents within a few miles of fracking to check the radon levels in their homes? And will you do this so that they can have a baseline check and then alert them and to have them monitor after every frac? And will you let us know of every frac? And then who would be responsible for costs associated with the radon abatement if the monitoring shows that it is related to the timing of the fracking, of the city or the operator? So measurements of radium in fracking wastewater in New York and Pennsylvania from the particularly radioactive Marcellus shale has been as high as 3,600 times the United States Environmental Protection Agency's limit for drinking water. One study found toxic levels of radiation in Pennsylvania waterway even after fracking wastewater was disposed of through an industrial wastewater treatment plant. The disposal of radioactive drill cuttings is an additional concern. A study found, a recent study found high levels of radon in buildings located in heavily-drilled areas in Pennsylvania, with levels of radon rising since the start of the fracking boom. Unsafe levels of radon and its decay products in natural gas produced from the Marcellus Shale may also contaminate pipelines and compressor stations, as well as pose risks to end-users when allowed to travel into homes. There's no federal oversight, and thank you.
Thank you. Christine Burris?
Good evening. My name's Kirsten Burris. I'm at 1303 Carolina Avenue in Longmont. And I wanted to thank you guys for the increased regulations and all the work that you've done. And I wanted to talk with you tonight specifically about fracking well leaks, and this is also in that document that you guys will be receiving. According to Schumlerberger, one of the world's largest companies specializing in fracking, about 5% of wells leak immediately. 50% leak after 15 years, and 60% leak after 30 years. So if we translate that to Longmont, we have, we're proposing 13 consolidated wells in Longmont. They don't know how many wells will be on each consolidated site, but since it's consolidated, we can think maybe at least two, probably more. But two wells per site, 26 wells in Longmont, that would then, according to Schumlerberger, 1.3 wells will leak immediately. 13 of these wells will leak within 15 years. 13 wells sounds good, and I think the consolidated wells, that sounds good, but they don't have the information about how many wells that's going to be, and that seems like pretty important information, especially when we're trying to make such an important decision. So that feels like a significant lack of information for our health and safety. And I just don't know exactly why we don't have that information now with all the details that they shared with us tonight, why they wouldn't give that to us as well. Monitoring is good, but when a well leaks benzene into the water at Union Reservoir, how do we bring that under compliance? I mean, that sounds good, but how do you bring benzene into Union Reservoir, and how are you going to be, I mean, isn't that going to be too late? So the monitoring is good, but I don't want to whitewash this into making it sound nice when we have such a serious decision-making that really is on your guys' shoulders. So I wanted to bring that. I would really like to have a moratorium continuation while we work out some of these very important details. Thank you.
Michael Burris? Okay, we'll move on to Annie Ritter?
Good evening. I'm Annie Ritter, 815 Sixth Avenue, Number 10. Thank you, counsel, for your time this evening. I would like to express my concerns around fracking in Longmont. Experiences in various states and accompanying studies have shown that the oil and gas industry's promises of job creation from drilling for natural gas have been greatly exaggerated. Many of the jobs are short-lived, and many have gone to out-of-area workers. With the arrival of drilling and fracking operations, communities have experienced steep increases in rates of crime, including sex trafficking, sexual assault, drunk driving, drug abuse, and violent victimization, all of which carry public health consequences. Social costs include strain on law enforcement, municipal services, and road damage. Economic analyses have found that drilling and fracking diminish property values, tax revenues for local governments, and tourism. Increased rates of industrial accidents and traffic accidents strain emergency services and create further burdens on local government services and budgets. Drilling and fracking pose an inherent conflict with mortgages and property insurance due to the hazardous materials used and the associated risks. There was a study in August 27th, 2015, that showed that fracking in or near public parks can cause tourists to stay away and lead to a decline in the park use, like Union Reservoir or Sandstone. On January 13th, 2016, a fire on a fracking site in Grady County, Oklahoma, that consumed 22 oil tankers required the response of six regional fire departments. I would ask you to consider the money that will be needed to ensure adequate response to emergencies at well pads, and to factor in health costs to the community. And I wonder what information is being given to the public about how to check that their homeowner's insurance covers hazards from fracking. Yes, they may be monitoring it, but why are we not hearing it when there is an error until months later? That doesn't make me feel very safe. I don't think we should be whitewashing the fact that there have been errors with the fact that they're doing a good job by testing. There are still errors happening, and for all we know, it could just be the beginning of more errors to come. With each problem that occurs, the Longmont citizens are being exposed. It just seems very risky to me. As someone who has grown up in Longmont and as a business owner in Longmont, I am deeply concerned for the health and safety of the land and people of Longmont, and I ask you to please consider the burden that fracking would pose on this community before moving forward with your decision. Thank you.
Rhonda Ritter?
Good evening. I'm Rhonda Ritter, and I live at 803 Sumner Street. I'd like to speak to you about the increasing number of earthquakes caused by fracking. A growing body of evidence from Ohio, Arkansas, Texas, Oklahoma, and Colorado links fracking wastewater injection wells to earthquakes of magnitudes as high as 5.8, in addition to swarms of minor earthquakes and fault slipping. Both the U.S. Geological Survey and state geological agencies, such as the Oklahoma Geological Survey, now acknowledge that earthquakes can be caused by wastewater injection. Many recent studies focus on the mechanical... Many recent studies focus on the mechanical ability of pressurized fluids to trigger seismic activity. In some cases, and especially in Canada, the fracking process itself has been linked to earthquakes and seismic activity as significant as magnitude 4.4. Emerging evidence suggests that earthquake risks cannot be prevented or mitigated through proper fracking protocols, or by simply limiting the rate of volume of injected fluid. The question of what to do with fracking wastewater remains a problem with no viable safe solution. In March 28, 2016, a summary of the evidence linking drilling and fracking activities to earthquakes appeared in Scientific American. Emerging data suggests that pressure changes caused by fracking wastewater injection can migrate for years before encountering a geological fault and altering stresses in ways that allow for slippage. In this way, earthquake risks can be spread out over both time and space, traveling for miles beyond the disposal well and persisting for a decade or more as injected fluids travel underground. In spite of increasing scientific clarity about these mechanisms, regulators have been slow to respond. On February 1, 2016, an article in the Texas Journal of Oil, Gas, and Energy Law exhaustively reviewed the literature on earthquake activity in areas of six states, and concluded that courts should impose strict liability for earthquake damage caused either by fracking itself or by the underground injection of fracking fluids. So, I would ask you, are there preparedness plans for earthquakes? Who is going to be responsible for damage caused by quakes? Are you planning to alert residents that they need to check their homeowner's insurance to determine if they have coverage should a quake occur? And are there plans to hold the operator accountable, at least for the deductible?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Belmont.
Good evening, Council members. Broomfield just passed a six-month moratorium unanimously. I'm Michael Belmont, 841 Tenacity Drive. You have just heard a summary of seven of the 18 topics covered by this compendium entitled "Scientific Medical and Media Findings Demonstrating Risks and Harms of Fracking", compiled by the Physicians for Social Responsibility. Now, who are they? The PSR, we'll call them. Over 8,000 members in the health profession, including more than 2,500 physicians all over the country, dedicated to primarily two goals. One, preventing nuclear war and the proliferation of nuclear power, protecting the public and our environment from toxic chemicals. In 1961, the PSR made its mark by providing research exposing the dangers of radioactive waste product of atmospheric nuclear testing, which led to the international treaty banning that practice. PSR's work became international, culminating in being awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for building public awareness and pressure to end the nuclear arms race. And in 1992, they began applying their medical expertise to environmental health issues, collaborating with the likes of MIT and the Harvard School of Public Health. Though fully 209 pages, this compendium is essentially only an index of the now hundreds of peer-reviewed scientific and independent studies on the dangers and risks of fracking, referencing and summarizing them. Now, reading from the conclusion of this compendium, quote, "Altogether, findings to date from scientific, medical, and journalistic investigations combine to demonstrate that fracking poses significant threats to air, water, health, public safety, climate stability, seismic stability, community cohesion, and long-term economic vitality. Emerging data from a rapidly expanding body of evidence continue to reveal a plethora of recurring problems and harms that cannot be sufficiently averted through regulatory frameworks. There is no evidence that fracking can operate without threatening public health directly or without imperiling climate stability upon which public health depends," end quote. Recently, the American Journal of Public Health made the following statement, quote, "Mounting empirical evidence shows harm to the environment and to human health, and we have no idea what the long-term effects might be. Ignoring the body of evidence to us is not a viable option anymore. And I must say in conclusion that regulating fracking is simply tantamount to trying to manage inevitable collateral damage, in this case, our health, that is always associated with dangerous activities." And so, I have one final question, and that is, are you intending and/or planning as a city to place our community at risk by proactively leasing and developing our mineral rights to exploit them financially? To me, that's probably the most important question tonight.
Michael Burris.
Yeah, apparently he had to pick his daughter up. Thanks for letting me speak. I had to go pick my daughter up from a band concert. No, so, thank you. Michael Burris, 1303 Carolina Avenue. Thank you for the presentation tonight. That was extremely informative, and I was very grateful to see it. It certainly helped me. I would like to address more of just the threats from the fracking infrastructure. This infrastructure for the drilling and fracking is very complicated and complex, and it just leaves lots of opportunity for accidents and disasters. It includes pipelines, compression stations, dehydrators, processing plants, rail tankers, flare stacks, and storage depots through which the oil and gas are moved, filtered, pressurized, warehoused, and vented. This also includes injection wells and recycling facilities that dispose and treat the liquid waste that the fracking generates. Air pollution is produced at every stage of this process. Compressor stations and pipelines are major sources of air pollutants, including benzene, a documented carcinogen, or linked to leukemia and formaldehyde that raise potential health risks for folks living nearby, while offering no offsetting economic benefits. And they are associated with loss of tax revenue and economic development for the communities where they are located. The Medical Society of the State of New York and the AMA have each called for comprehensive health impact assessments regarding the health and safety risks associated with natural gas pipelines, which include fires, explosions, and leaks. And lastly, gas storage facilities include not only man-made holding tanks, but geological formations, most notably abandoned salt mines, and caverns, depleted oil fields left over from mining and drilling operations. These unlined cavities were never created nor engineered with the intent to store pressurized gas. I do have a few questions that came up after listening to these guys. One of the, I don't know a lot about it, but it seems to me like there is a, and I would want to know if there is danger with these horizontal pipelines with outgassing upwards? The other issue is, you know, how do you repair these water table issues? Mr. Rademacher described the plume. How, if you've got this plume of waste that comes down and spreads out, how do you contain that? How do you stop it? How do you repair these? And isn't it important for us to know morally, you know, where the spent fluids are going? What's happening to them? You know, are they, are wastes getting shipped off to some, you know, and becoming somebody else's problem? I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Katie Fissinger.
I too would like to thank city staff for the wonderful presentations that they gave this evening. As you have heard, members of our community have information that is deeply relevant to the establishment of public policy. Accordingly, we have a bevy of questions of our own that require public answers, some of which you are unlikely to be able to answer this evening. I urge each and every council member and the staff who has prepared and delivered presentations to carefully read what our speakers have prepared for you in complete detail, as well as their spoken remarks. In total, the compendium provides peer-reviewed past and present reports on many of the consequences of drilling and fracking. The Colorado Supreme Court notwithstanding, these are compelling matters for the people of Longmont who had the wisdom and forward-thinking to impose a ban on fracking and injection wells. It should never be assumed that our risks have been completely handcuffed by court rulings. Of course, the oil and gas industry will view these rulings as all-inclusive. That has been their MO since the early 1990s rulings. There is no reason for them to change that pattern if they can get what they want. The Colorado Open Records Act states its purpose to be that public business must not be conducted in secret. Its intent is to afford the public access to a broad range of meetings. Although the act lists the areas allowed in executive session, it does not intend that these allowance be used as a shield to withhold information that is relevant to the public but included and discussed in executive session, when there is no compelling need to be maintained confidential. We request that the city provide the following: a map or maps that have either already been prepared or may need to be prepared that show all of the locations where wells can be drilled, anywhere within the city of Longmont or on city-owned property outside the city limits; that such maps identify, A, who owns the mineral rights, and B, the entity that either leases those rights or has reflected interest in leasing those rights. At an earlier council meeting, Councilman Paula Christensen requested an open forum where the public can ask and receive answers to their questions. Her request was modified by Councilmember Gabe Santos to have only a study session and follow with an open forum suggested by Paula, should it be needed. Based on Councilmember Christensen's request, the open forum and the answers to questions submitted tonight should still be held. Oil and gas within Longmont or on city-owned properties is a major issue that will affect our community for many years to come. I will be presenting to Valerie seven copies of a very long list of questions, one copy for each of the council members. We seriously want all of our questions addressed. Thank you.
Brian Goverson.
Somebody left their glasses up here. Hi, my name is Brian Goverson. I live at 310 Judson Street, and here in Longmont. I'm not going to speak to you tonight with any studies or any data. I'm going to speak to you, I went to University of Colorado and got my degree in microbiology. One of the classes that I had to take was organic chemistry, and in that class, we worked with, you know, some pretty nasty chemicals, and some of those included toluene and benzene and formaldehyde and some other chemicals that are currently used in the fracking processes. We were required to use those chemicals in a fume hood and wear protective gear with safety glasses and rubber gloves because they were known to cause cancer. And, you know, they do have regulations, and they do have limits, but it just takes one molecule to hit one specific gene in our body that will stop the regulation of cell, you know, of cell multiplication, and then you have a tumor. So, these values that have been generated have been determined, you know, over a large population, and it doesn't cover those people who are susceptible to very small amounts, parts per billion, we're talking. So, that's, you know, that's a critical point. And then, you know, I've worked in the biotech industry for 20-plus years, also working with such chemicals, and we were looking at the effects of chemicals and the parts per billion, like I said earlier, and the impact it has on the body. And some of these chemicals have a structure, it's like a six-sided ring, and those, if you look at some of the molecules and the hormones and the vitamins that are produced in our bodies, they have very similar structures. And our body doesn't always have the discernment to know which is cancer-causing and which is not. So, you know, as a citizen of Longmont, I'm really concerned about what fracking, you know, proposes in that respect. In that industry, we were currently monitoring our water, our air quality. We had monitors that we would strap to our lab coats. We monitored and water-tested once a month in a waste collection. And so, I guess my question for you is, how are you planning to monitor for these chemicals? And how are you planning to monitor the water? And how are you going to notify us, the citizens, of possible violations? And I ask you, as, you know, elected officials, that, you know, you stand up still, that we're counting on you, and that we hold you in this high role, because that's why, what we want for you to represent us, and not to represent the interests of the, you know, gas and oil industry. So, you know, make a decision based on that. And, you know, I'm very passionate about the environment. I'm a native to Colorado, and I find it very sad to see what is going on, you know, outside our city limits. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marilyn Belczynski.
She's not here.
Okay, Mark Osborne.
My name is Mark Osborne. I'm, my address is 937 Danny's Court. And good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. I want to say thank you for your time and your attention, and thank you for this opportunity both to hear some of the plans that are proposed, and especially to the folks who have spent some time to dig into some of the research and explain, not only to you, but to me, who's just sitting here listening and hearing this stuff for the first time, how some of these things work and some of the concerns. I think the most fundamental concern that I have is the balance of attention and focus and time and energy and money that comes to this kind of an issue. I believe that both the council in general, and probably the citizens of Longmont in general, have probably shifted towards being a little bit more pro-fracking in the last months. But I'm not sure that that's an honest shift, certainly in the case of the citizens, because obviously, the airwaves have been blanketed with advertising supporting fracking for months and months and months, and there have been millions and millions and millions of dollars behind that. That's not my idea of democracy. It's not my idea of a fair opportunity to give all the issues a complete and thorough hearing. I think any one of the topics that a number of these people raised this evening could certainly be devoted, you know, another 10 or 15 minutes, just to give them a full airing. And so, my message to you is essentially that I'm counting on you, I'm asking you to represent the best interests, in spite of the fact that the attention given to this issue, and the attention given to pro-fracking forces, and the incomplete information that's been distributed across television far outweighs that which is complete and correct and thorough, and probably would influence citizens to not support this initiative. So, my request is, please look for a way, such as the moratorium, as surrounding communities have done, to stop this process from working forward, moving forward, and looking at what the real risks are. Thank you for listening.
Gordon Pedro.
Mayor and Council, Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to... Thank you for this opportunity to hear very valuable information. I would only encourage you to maybe do it more often and keep your residents with you as you try to protect our public health and our quality of life. During the presentation, a couple of questions jumped out at me. I did not plan to speak tonight. But given the introduction tonight of Cub Creek Resources, I believe is the name, or something like that, into the mix, I have a couple of questions. Did you put that slide up there? On the seismic survey, which we were informed, I think, most everybody tonight for the first time that this has been contemplated, with an agreement coming to you in January, it looks to me like that it has the potential of changing or bringing new issues into the master agreement that TOP and CUB are operating on. And look at those machines. Those machines do real damage to wildlife habitat and the critters that live in that habitat. So my question on this is what type of environmental assessment will you require before these behemoths move into and invade our open space and other public properties? The other information that I thought was relevant that caused the question was, in order to get the TOP master agreement negotiated a few years ago, the city agreed to lease additional mineral rights so that they could have a bigger operation than they had before with what mineral rights they had already obtained. It was okay to get this deal done. But given the rather cozy relationship that was demonstrated with Cub Creek tonight from some of the staff presentations, I want to ask you straightforward, are you contemplating additional city resources being leased to Cub Creek as part of a master agreement revision? And I think that that is going to have a big deal in this community if you're contemplating that, especially if the citizens are not involved in this process and understand the real reasons why that might be contemplated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Brian Johnston, 926 Kaufman Street. Like the previous gentleman, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight until something came up in the information session. And to reiterate what everyone else has said, we greatly appreciate it, any information you can provide. However, there was sort of a major issue I thought that sort of was lightly brought up, and that's the fact that there is a current benzene leak ongoing and that the operating company was not the one who discovered this. It was taxpayer-funded county and city monitors that discovered this. Obviously, that brings up some concerns. And this might be a little different than usual protocol around here, but it was mentioned earlier that Club Creek CEO Rob Gardner's in the audience. I'd like to challenge him to come up and answer just a couple of quick questions that really need to be addressed. That first question is, why is the company that you're now partnered with, why did they not discover this leak? Why was this burden put on taxpayers to discover this? The second question we would like to address is, now that you're a new partnering organization with TOP, what specifically are you going to do to prevent this from happening and to ensure that it's being monitored and that the citizens are made aware of it? So I'd like to relinquish the rest of my time and challenge Mr. Gardner to come up and ask these two questions for us. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I guess that ends our session. So one thing we didn't do, does anybody have any motions to direct City Manager to add agenda items to future agendas at this time? Okay. Then now it's time for mayor and council comments. And I guess I would like to thank staff for all the hard work that they did putting together their presentations, and I think it was very informative and I think it was very helpful. So, any other comments from council? All right, City Manager, any additional remarks? Councilmember Christensen?
Well, I was a little slow on the uptake there with your, but I would actually like to suggest that next time, that on a future agenda, we consider having, consider discussing a moratorium and that we consider discussing a future open forum because there was a lot of interest in that. So perhaps we can explore that on a future agenda.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm not chicken. A lot of you guys are here tonight and I just want to voice my thoughts. First of all, I am aware of all the passion, time, energy, resources that many of our citizens and neighbors of surrounding communities have put into this particular topic of fracking and specific, or oil and gas and specifically fracking. And so the dates, I mean, I have not been involved nearly as much as many of the people in the audience tonight, but the, I remember when that newspaper article came out with, by Scott Rocher about the Ryder Well five years ago, and the first council meeting I ever attended as a council member was fracking. And Gordon Pedro was the city manager, and I remember going, I literally, I voiced it. I said, "What are you, where did you guys come from? I don't even know what fracking is. What is this?" I looked over at Katie Witt and Gabe and they were looking like, "Don't, don't, don't do this. Be quiet, don't." And so I just...
No, if you want to speak your mind, you should speak your mind.
Yeah, jumped into the foray. And it's just, it's a complicated landscape. But the one thing, to the extent that there are people in the audience that trust me, maybe they don't, but I do know that the council currently, we are aware of your concerns. We are aware of what, you heard it tonight, what city staff presented to us and the questions regarding moratoriums, seismic activities, the situation of the TOP operating agreement. We're aware of everything that's going on. And the silence that you, I think, heard from the dais was one of not ignoring anyone or fear, it's just that it's just one more night and a very long road of dealing with a topic that's not going away. And so, and I'm sure that it's not going to go away for the city. So, thank you all for coming and appreciate your efforts and your thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, I think that I would support a, an open forum to further discuss the topics that were talked about tonight. Since it is such a sensitive subject in the community, I think more information needs to be shared with council and the rest of the community, as well as with city staff, telling us, you know, more about what's going on in the industry as a whole. I think there's more that we haven't really explored yet and I'd like to hear more about it. We do have a list of questions I'm going to want to look at. I'm lukewarm on the moratorium at this point until we know more about what the ramifications and the effects on our current regulations are. We heard a little bit tonight from Attorney Kramer, but I'm not convinced that that's something that is in the bag, is 100% surety. So I'd like to know more before I would support a moratorium.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is a huge subject and I don't think that we should take lightly the effects that the scientific community has brought out about health, safety and wellness. It's really important and I don't want to be the one in 25 years to have made a decision that has caused irreparable damage to human beings. So I do think that, I support also the open forum because all of these questions need to be answered. I think the public and I want to know what the answers are to these. So I support that as well.
Don't we have a public open forum already planned on the agenda?
In January.
In January?
January 17th, you have an open forum for...
Whatever.
That's the one that we have every year.
Right.
So council could elect to use that date to further discuss this, if that's your desire.
Sure. Okay, can be, right as well. Councilmember Moore?
That open forum typically has been about a lot more subjects than one single...
Oh, yes.
And I think there's enough interest in the community and enough, we've heard enough mistrust from the community that for us to whitewash this is unacceptable to me. We need to be more open and transparent on this oil and gas regulations, what's going on. And I don't really want to use that time when we have other issues in the community that need to be brought forward.
Councilmember Peck?
The other thing I just wanted to bring up, thank you, Mayor Coombs, was that if the county puts a six-month moratorium on, doesn't that affect us as well?
No.
They're not all in Weld County though, are they?
Not incorporated. It's just the outsides between the cities.
Cities, yeah, that's all they're dealing with.
Okay, it doesn't affect us.
So ultimately, it's council's discretion in terms of the open forum and how you want to do that, so.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just, I mean, just to be, put my cards on the table, the one thing, and Kay and I have had conversations, and let me put it this way, suppose you would have won your fracking lawsuit, how far would you go to defend it? You know? My personal, my blood and guts went into those oil and gas regs and I will die to defend them. And so what that means is if we put a moratorium into effect, we change the regs or anything like that, we're going back to war with the state. And I always viewed the oil and gas regs as the safety net. If you lost your lawsuit, then the oil and gas regs, they were there. The oil and gas regs prohibit fracking within the residential areas of Longmont. Part of winning that lawsuit was we had to show that there was no operational conflict between us and TOP operating. What that meant was we had to make a deal with the devil and show that we could pass our regs and they could still do their drilling. As a result, will they drill? Yes. But what we get out of it is no drilling in residential areas, we get limited well pad sites, and we push it well outside of the city off to the east. And so now, so I personally, I'm not against a forum, but just so you know, I view the, if we put a moratorium into effect, what we're basically doing is going back and saying, "Hey, TOP," or now I guess it's Cub Creek, "we are not going to honor our contractual commitments. We're now in breach." Or if we change the oil and gas regulations, right now, we won. We won, dismissed with prejudice. They can never come back and attack our regs, we're safe. Unless, of course, there was, I can't imagine a scenario, to be honest, where that would happen. So I'm, I will talk about oil and gas, you know, I don't enjoy it, but the, I will talk about this topic, but at the end of the day, I cannot see me doing anything to put our oil and gas regulations at risk. And so if a forum is being done to push for a moratorium or if it's going to be done to renew our regs and lose what we already won, me personally, that's, I'm not, that's not going to be something that at least this one seventh of council will be able to relinquish.
I think that's two sevens because I totally agree with you. I don't think in a moratorium, what's this going to buy us, six months? What are we going to accomplish in six months? What are we, what new information are we going to find? We're not going to change our, like I said, we're not going to change our gas and oil regs and risk, you know, throwing all that hard work out in more lawsuits. So, you know, we don't even know what we're dealing with until we know exactly what the final plan is. And, you know, we have a contractual obligation that we got to fulfill. You know, I'm concerned. I mean, I'm the most healthy person, health is everything to me and I do everything I can to protect my health. And, you know, I think the city and everybody that works, the city staff, has the same goal is to try to protect the health in any way we can. You know, unfortunately, our powers are limited. You know, if you want to really totally ban fracking, you need to be talking to your state legislators or someone that's actually got a lot more control than the mayor, you know. I've lost a lot of sleep over this and put in a lot of research, so it's not like, you know, it's just, you get to the point where there's some battles you just can't win. And sometimes what you do at that point is figure out, well, what's the best, you know, it's time to punt and pin the opponent back on the seven-yard line and get the best field position you can and move forward with your life. Okay. All right. So now, City Manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor and Council.
City Attorney, any comments?
Mayor and Council, I'm not sure what our direction is. Sorry.
I think the direction is they want to have some sort of, in the future, a open forum specifically on oil and gas. Well, I don't know if we need to decide tonight exactly when that is, but I think more transparency, another forum that's separate than our traditional, maybe it's an outside of a council meeting type of, but... Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Can we do it outside of council like we did for the marijuana forum, perhaps on a Friday afternoon or Saturday afternoon or whatever? Just to answer some of these questions?
We can bring back some options for council for you all to consider based on scheduling.
Okay. That would be great.
That's what I heard and that's what I was going to do.
Okay. Thank you.
No further comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.